Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April 13, 2022, meeting of the Franklin Board of Education. The meeting has been properly posted. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Mrs. Witkowski.
Here.
Mr. Alexandrovich.
Here.
Mrs. Sapursky.
Here.
Dr. Khan is excused. Dr. Baer.
Here.
Sorry. Mrs. -- Mr. Sprague.
Here.
We are all present, except for Dr. Baer.
Thank you. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
A motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. School presentation, Franklin High School. Mr. Vollo, please.
Good evening, everybody. Oh, you got it? You don't need to. Okay. So we are extremely happy to be joined by a group of amazing Sabres and students in the back today who will talk through many of their experiences. But just to frame things, we want to start and remind you of some of the work that we're doing at high school this year. So if we can advance the slide. Our school leadership team defined our purpose with a few words this year. Really, they did this prior to even our district, you know, having a very similar kind of theme. So those two things happened generatively and independently, and they fit together really well. It's the idea of all of us for all of them. Our school leadership team last summer talked about serving, empowering, growing, and being all in for all kids. So serve and power, grow, all in for all kids was the way that our school leadership team defined their purpose, and that permeates to our staff this year. If you proceed to the next slide, I'll remind you that we have three goals, as does every building at least. So one goal is built around student achievement, and student achievement is that big, heavy work of making sure all of our students are ready for life. And really, the reason we have these students here today is for them to give you some idea of things they've done or are doing that makes them more ready for whatever happens in a few short months after they leave us and go on with the rest of their amazing, amazing lives. So when we look at that idea of students making progress towards being college career-ready, we're really talking about life readiness. And life readiness involves students taking rigorous courses aligned to career pathways, having learning experiences that go beyond our classroom, or take things that are pretty unique to Franklin High School, or things that not every high school has, capstone courses, or advanced placement courses that they might not be able to do if they went elsewhere. So these might open up doors of what they want to do, what they don't want to do, and just make them more ready for, again, life after high school. If you go to the next slide. And we think about this really relating to our value of personal growth, right? All of us get better every day, right? And our students and staff all do that every day. They show up to work or school. And we talk about the real world. I always bristle when people say that, you know, kids are not in the real world. This is absolutely the real world, right? This is the real world for every one of our kids, 4K through 12. That world they're experiencing is their world. So when we talk about that, having high expectations for what we do every day, how we take advantage of opportunities, is really what it's all about. So with that being said, I would like to turn our attention to our students in the back. If you go to the last slide, I have up here, and on their nametags, you'll see kind of the course or the experience that they're associated with. And what I would do is I would invite the board, I'm not sure what sort of motion you need to do so, to leave your seats and really interact with the students who are back there. So you'll notice, you know, there's multiple students, sometimes one representing a thing, sometimes more than one. They all are unique individuals with individual stories. So hearing from them, what they've done, why they've done it, what they've learned, okay, what they're planning to do, I'll leave those things to you. I'll try not to direct traffic and set timers and say, please rotate and do those things. But I don't know how long we want to give for that interaction. I mean, we have, you know.
10 minutes.
About 10 minutes? Okay. So just kind of be mindful of, you know, try and talk to more than one student if you can, because they're all really engaging. And I told them it's not super formal, they don't have to be nervous. And again, let them tell their stories, but again, ask them what they're doing, what they're learning, and how they're more ready for life now than maybe they were four or 12 or however many years ago.
And I would just invite our audience members to listen in, and if you could perhaps just allow the board members to ask the questions and interact and be more of a listener in this, I would appreciate that. But by all means, stand behind them and listen in and get this good information as well. So, thank you.
Okay.
So students, do you have anything that you want to say before? Any last-minute concerns, worries? Okay, you're ready? All right. So board, please.
Converge. These poor children.
It seems like there's three.[324.58]
And when we talk about achievement and every kid being life ready, that's the easier thing we always talk about. We talk about things like closing gaps, you know, one of the things that's gonna be important for us, we don't really have a tactic around it this year. But as we go forward in the future, you know, experiences like these are experiences that every student should have. Whatever their interest is, whether that's, you know, construction, autos, whatever it is. And what we have found through our study and our look at our own data is that oftentimes these experiences aren't experienced by every student, you know, in a sense. So we have gaps there as well as gaps in achievement. So that's gonna be some of the hard work that we have to do to ensure that every student has, again, whatever the experience is that's important to them. And again, these students hopefully shared a bit about their passion as well as what they've learned about themselves, what they wanna do. So, thank you so much. Was there any questions? Happy to take any questions.
First of all, thank you. You all were very articulate and clearly passionate about what you're doing, so thank you for being here. What, if you had to ballpark it, what percentage of students would you say are currently graduate, like of the current senior class have had a similar experience?
Like a capstone course or a course like that? I'd probably say between twenty and thirty percent. Just because when I think about the different, and again, that's, I wouldn't put that number down in stone, but when I think about the different possibilities, I don't know if you think it's something like construction two, or advanced video production, or autos two. And again, some of these students might be in more than one of those places. There are students who are part of our video production program, or they are part of this other program as well. So you get that, there's a lot of different things kids might wind up doing, or the advanced manufacturing, you know, the welding and machining and whatnot. So you start to get that, you start to get, you know, good pockets in groups of students, or inspired design, anything else in between. You get a wider range. When we think of it in that broad way, but that's still far short of four hundred or three hundred and seventy-five.
And there are other capstone classes that are not represented here, correct?
Yep, there is engineering, and then there's courses that aren't quote-unquote capstones, but are still really amazing courses that our kids take and do, you know, really well in. So, you know, as we think about those things, you know, really trying to honor all the different ways to do school and to get those rich experiences. And again, like if you're familiar, we sent two kids to automotive competition who went through our autos program and reached that. It's not a capstone, and yet it's also a really great program where if those kids want a job in that, they probably could have one. And it's kind of their choice, you know, in terms of what they do next.
How many of our students actually have jobs?
How many of our students? I'm not sure.
You know, part-time jobs, I mean, retail or
We could do informal, how many people in the back got a job? Put your hand up.
Oh, we don't
Oh, boy.
Hundred percent of the small sample. So, while that's not representative, I would say that even like in most groups, most students have some sort of job at this point, I think.
I just wonder how we think about that. I mean, what, how's that experience add into your college degree already, you know?
Yeah, really.
I think most parents would, I don't know how they decide to get a job. They need money, or their parents are saying, it's time to get a job, or
Yes.
You wanna drive a car?
Yeah, yes, both, yes.
But you're right, Linda, that those, you know, having a job, any kind of job, even if it's not related to your field, gives you some of those, you know, soft skills, those, you know, those good employee kind of skills.
Oh, we don't talk about that in the high school environment or anything, like who's working
We don't really control it.
Well, I know, I'm just curious how we
But we will hear from students about like work that's really great, and jobs that are awesome, or jobs and experiences that aren't.
They talk to each other, right?
Yep, and they'll, you know, experience coworkers and bosses that maybe they don't wanna work for anymore, and some that do. So, I mean, like everybody else, they go through all the world of work and they experience those things and, you know, then get to decide, you know what, I don't think this is for me, or I need to find a new job because this is not what I wanted.
Because I have senior job board that's pretty actively promoted, you know, like, come work for us.
A lot, a lot of people want our kids to come work for them.
I mean, that helped me to decide that quarantine tasseling wasn't for me. One thing I was asking a lot of the students when I spoke to them was just how they heard about these various courses. Because I know earlier in the year when you came before us, there was conversation about the advise, the role of advisors. And so I'm just wondering how, how much the information about these particular routes is sort of within one or two particular teachers versus a shared knowledge bank amongst all advisors?
Well, I mean, I can say that, you know, selfishly as an advisor, I know a lot about a lot, and, but I'm also not maybe typical in that sense.
Typical advisor.
No, but I have three, well, two and a half advisees back there. Jake's a former, Emma and Clara are current still, but, and I'm proud of them. But the, as you think about advisees and advisors though, like I think kids love experiences with their teachers. So I think you probably heard a lot of, I took this class with this teacher and I loved this thing that they did. So whether that's our food teacher, culinary arts in terms of a sign of better, or it's somebody else, you know, like who said, this is a really great thing. And they hear about experiences from other students in terms of like, this is a really great thing to do, you should do this, or do it with me. And as much as we as adults, or as an advisor, or you as a parent can say, hey, have you thought about X, Y, and Z? Like those other things are gonna carry more weight than whatever we can put in front of them on a slide deck, or hey, did you think about, or
That's a good point, yeah.
Well, it sounds like the AP seminar classes from, was only offered last year for fifteen people, and now it's gonna be forty people next year, so Clearly, the students are talking
It's students, I'd say.
Students are talking it up as well.
Yeah, students and staff, and it really takes, you know, you need people to be passionate about something and wanna champion it. And if there's a course that doesn't really have somebody who is connected to it, it's harder for students sometimes to identify it with someone. So I'm not saying that in a bad way, but it really can, if, you know, there's one person teaching, you know, AP blank, or, you know, this course in career and technical education. If that person doesn't, you know, promote, you know, people to take it, and really encourage kids to take it, then those things don't grow. And there really is a choice. So we always, I say that every February or January to parents, at those registration nights for freshmen, like your core selections dictate who we employ and the courses that run and everything else, so we really have to make sure we get those things right. But also, like, that's the power of the choices we have. And even if you're a core teacher, you still have choice within that. So we can't take for granted that kids don't pick your classes, even if you're a math, science, social studies, or English teacher, because there are points where kids can choose not to take that subject anymore, or continue to take it.
Anyone else? Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Vol.
Well, thank you, and again, thank you, students.
Thank you, students. Appreciate it. All right, item five, while they, while everybody's getting packed up to leave, item five is community comment. And nobody's signed up for community comment, but does anybody, does anybody want to comment? Okay, we'll move on from community comment after everybody. If everybody's packed up. Looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. School board announcements. Anybody have any announcements? I'd like to, I'd like to thank everybody who voted last week. And I appreciate the last three years, and I'm looking forward to the next three years. And that's all I have to say about that, but thank you.
Ditto. Yeah, it's been more than three years. Right, Dr. Freitag. We won't go there, though.
There was, school board calendar, the regular board of education meeting Wednesday, April twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two, at the ECC at six o'clock, and a regular board of education meeting Wednesday, May eleventh, twenty-twenty-two, at the ECC at six o'clock. District administrator update. Dr. Miller, please.
All right, good evening. This week we've been working on finishing up our forward testing in our schools. And we're actually beginning to focus on what needs to be accomplished in what would be the last eight weeks of school. I'm pleased to share that we've also been learning more about Ramadan with our families, and that our staff has been generously treated to breakfast celebrations in a couple of our schools. This past weekend has been really busy. Sunday, our football team was honored for being state champions, and were recognized by the mayor, Senator Bradley, and Representative Skoronsky in Wickers. Also this past weekend, our students were able to cut the red ribbon at the home that they helped build. This was our third annual home build with our partner, Tim O'Brien Homes. Students have been a part of the building process through their construction two course at Franklin High School, and the teacher there is Andrew Mentee. Finally, and throughout the entire weekend, our families and community were treated to the wonderful student performance of the musical Matilda at the Saber Center. As for upcoming events, I'm pleased to announce that on April twenty-seventh, from five to seven PM, Franklin High School will be hosting a hiring event for the trades and manufacturers. The target audience is our prospective youth apprenticeship and graduate, students and graduating seniors. Several employers from the Franklin Business Park Consortium, along with other major manufacturers, will be looking to hire in the area of carpentry, plumbing, welding, HVAC, electrical, and CNC. We're also pleased to announce that we will again be hosting our Culture Fest this year, and that will be on May nineteenth. Last but not least, I'd like to put a plug in for the Franklin Educational Foundation and the Eco Club Shoe Drive. It's a drive and drop-off that will be held at Franklin High School on April thirtieth and May first from eleven to one. So if you're doing any spring cleaning, you've got some shoes in your closet, bring them by if you can. As I conclude my update, I'd like to take this opportunity to announce our new director of teaching and learning, Mr. Bob Blessington. And he probably doesn't need to stand. You'll see, Bob. I just have a few words to say about you, Bob. You can make yourself comfortable seated if you'd like. Bob has been serving as the principal of Horning Middle School for the school district of Waukesha for the last five years. Prior to that, he was an elementary principal and a high school associate principal. He was an elementary school teacher for seven years, and actually started his career here in Franklin as an intern at Southwood Glen Elementary School. And I was here then. Mr. Blessington, Bob, his school has been recognized for their state report card in two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty-one. The scores were not only the highest in the history of his school, they represented the second highest improvement in all schools in two thousand nineteen. Personally, Bob believes that as a school leader, he has the ability to change the trajectory of a child's life in a positive and profound way. He has strong convictions that all students can be successful and learn at high levels, including those that are marginalized. He believes that we can't be satisfied maintaining status quo, and that it's our moral imperative to strive for educational excellence for all. So welcome, Bob. We're all really looking forward to working with you, and thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you. Welcome, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Miller. Item ten, reports, presentations, and other school board business. Wisconsin DPI School Nutrition Recognitions. Dr. Miller, please.
Okay, so I think I'm gonna stand up for this. I'm gonna go over here.
Okay.
This is gonna be on this great backdrop now. So I'm honored to present on behalf of the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction, a recognition of Mr. Jim Milzer and Ms. Monica Hubler. So if you could come forward and stand with me, please? He's gonna operate that, Andrew. This recognition is for the twenty-six years of service Ms. Hubler has provided, and the thirty-one years of service that Mr. Milzer has provided to the school nutrition program of our school district. Your service exemplifies dedication and commitment. Your diligent efforts have been instrumental in providing an effective school food service program that has enhanced the health and nutritional well-being of children you serve. Your contribution is an inspiration to food service personnel everywhere. On behalf of Franklin Schools, please accept our sincere gratitude for contributing to the ability of our students to learn and achieve by ensuring that they're provided nutritious foods. Our food service program has always been extremely well-run, and we're very proud of your staff and your leadership. So with that, I'd like to present you this certificate. And thank you very much for everything you've done for our children in Franklin Public Schools. And actually, in the spirit of nutrition Oh, goodness. Hand over to you this time.
Yeah, once in a while, once every thirty years.
Thank you very much.
I just wanna thank the district for so much support. It was a really good fit for me, and I loved being in Franklin. And I'm the only director that had the same business manager for the entire time that they were in a school district. And I'm in a fifteen-school co-op, and so I think that speaks to Jim's leadership and the support that they got, we got from the board, you know, too. So I just really always enjoyed my job and serving the kids, so.
Absolutely. And I'd say that although on paper here I've been at it longer, I just provided support, and Monica did all the heavy lifting. And there was a lot of it over the years, a lot of changes, the changes with COVID, the changes in federal regulations, and then just the availability or nonavailability of people to work, and redoing it every day to make it work so the kids got meals. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Saber Center update. Mr. Stewart, please.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. Now, let's see if my computer, okay, there we are. Thank you for having me. I started as the, my name is Tracy Stewart. I am the manager of the Saber Center for the Performing Arts. I started about a year ago, a little over a year ago. It's my first presentation to the board. So it was fantastic that you invited me to present this evening. I've met several of you at, at events and, and through student, student involvement in the district. Look forward to seeing you all at, at more shows in the future. So, the Saber Center aligns with the FPS mission statement of inspiring personal success through learning experiences that focus on student needs and active partnerships with family and community. Public expression, personal expression in the arts are essential to a student's development of self and their place in the community. And the Saber Center provides a safe environment for students to express themselves in the arts and to the community. Our mission objectives are to provide a venue of support and enhancement for our educational programs. Providing logistical and technical support for these needs of the same programs, and our district, and provide our district families and larger Franklin community a place where they can partake and engage in talents of our students in a very audience-friendly venue. We also provide a performance venue for incoming events and interest to the school and community. We'll get into some more of these in specifics in my slides coming up. But I take, didn't take this opportunity of running the Saber Center and managing it very seriously for our students and for the community. We are a public, very public face of the school district to our community. Our usage varies greatly. We have performing arts classes in the music department. The theater performances, as well as our elementary choirs come in every year to do performances. So every student in the district has opportunities to be in front of their friends and family and show, showcase what they've been learning in school and how they, how they've grown and developed. We have many other co-curricular events that happen, as far as our fall play, Distinguished Young Women's Event, Ecology Club. The FHS football team comes in and they do meetings in the Saber Center because it's one of the few venues that's large enough to accommodate the entire team, as well as, as well as our theater musicals, student talent shows, National Honor Society, as well as academic usages of psych presentations, research presentations, class meetings. Gold Block presentations are happening at least once a week in the Saber Center. Because again, it is a venue, one of the few venues that can host a large group of students. And having it available for those students is essential to, to, to a good education and, you know, keeping everybody informed of what's, what they need to know. We also have academic events such as freshman preview nights, Health Speaker Series, Pathways to the Future, Senior Awards Nights, various awards nights, like the ring presentation for our football team this last Sunday, as well as providing a space for community rentals. We've had, we have, we've had a few community rentals in the time that I've been here as we've emerged from our, from our COVID restrictions. Last year, at the end of the year, we weren't able to have any large, even large gathering events. But starting summer of last year, we were able to start inviting in larger groups, still with, with social distancing and, and COVID guidelines in place of masking and, and such. We have several rental, rental events coming up in the, in the next weeks and months, including throughout the summer. Almost every weekend of the summer, we have, we have rental events of, of various organizations coming in. One of our big alliances this year that's been developed has been with Forte Theater Company, which is a local Franklin theater company. They do several classes for youth through the, through the Community and Rec Department. And we hosted their junior production of Annie Junior, which was very successful, over thirteen-hundred tickets sold, which set them up, set them up in a good place for moving forward with our organization. They're coming in again this summer with, with Frozen Junior in August. So, yes, Frozen in August. But that is a relationship we would like to continue to foster, especially with their youth programs. We do have our own direct website, sabercenter.com. This does, this does connect directly to the district website, so it's kind of a forwarding landing page type of situation. And as I've implemented some of my changes in the, in the Saber Center, after the long-time supervision from Steven Kraus, who passed away in, in spring of twenty-twenty, we have been doing some, some adjustments. We saw the need of, and the desire for live streaming events for people that either cannot be in attendance due to health reasons, due to personal conflicts, or just distance. You know, family members that are out and out of town, out of state, can still participate live in the events. So that is one, one system that we were able to put in place last spring. So, and, and have seen good response from the community and from our families in people logging in for the live streams. Due to copyright issues and copyright concerns, we have not been posting those to YouTube for, for continued access. Copyright law gets a little complicated sometimes, so those are only live events. We do keep archive copies, but those are live events. We've also implemented a new public ticketing system for all of our, all of our events, which helps us track our, our, track our ticket sales, where those sales are coming from, as well as being able to, to get some information of our patrons so we can do some direct marketing if we, if we choose to do that going forward. The ticketing system is also tied with our live stream. People sign in and actually request a ticket for the live stream, and, and there's a direct access that way versus just being a public, open environment. Our ticketing system is LUDIS tickets, and it's sabercenter.ludis.com for tickets. And our live stream access is Anywhere Seat, so it's sabercenter-anywhereseat.com. These are ticketing and live stream access systems that were actually developed by a former high school theater teacher, so, and one of his former students who went into IT development. So it's very much geared towards education infrastructure, and there's a, there's a small fee with the LUDIS ticketing when people purchase advanced tickets online that goes, that offsets the, the ability to access their system. It's nothing that costs us any money. Our patrons pay a small fee, I think it's around three percent, four percent on their tickets to, to, and that puts a very advanced ticketing system in our hands without any district expense. So, our event attendance. Event attendance for the twenty through twenty-one, twenty-two has been seven thousand six hundred thirty-six attendees and four hundred thirty-two live stream attendances. That is for so far in this year. We still have all of our spring concerts coming up.
And remind us, how many seats are in the Saber Center?
There are eight hundred fifty seats in the Saber Center.
Thank you.
A lot of these have come from our recent theater events. Annie Junior was, was thirteen-hundred tickets, and that is included in this. And we just closed Matilda, did our run of Matilda this last weekend, and we sold twenty-two hundred tickets. That is an average of over, of more than five hundred fifty tickets per show for four shows. So we were, we were packing the house very well, and, and shows tremendous community support for the arts.
So the attendees is really just for performances, not including any academic, academic uses of
Yes, that's public performances. So that's, that's all of our music events, and as well as theater events, and, and rental events. And like I said, we've only had a couple of our rental events for this year as well. Tech Crew continues to be a fine offering for our clubs, after-school clubs. I've had, we had over thirty students express interest at the beginning of the year. That has, of course, developed into about a half a dozen that are, that are continually and continuously involved. I actually have a show choir performance this evening and have two students coming to, to help run the lights and sound livestream for that. It's been, they've been a valuable, valuable resource in, in operating the Saber Center, and gives them real-world, live performance experience for, for, in support of our events, because some people, like myself, being onstage isn't, isn't really our desire. We prefer, we prefer to, to provide the background support to that. So, coming up here, we are releasing a public survey to expand our offerings. So the survey concept is that the Saber Center was intended for student and student events as well as a place for community arts presentations in Franklin. The Saber Center has been well utilized by the school since its opening in twenty-fourteen. And, and we would now like to host more public professional shows for the community interests. We are seeking public input on the types of programming the community would like to, like to see in the Saber Center in the future. Our methodology is to, and to, will be to introduce in an upcoming community publication. I forget the name of the publication. Mr. Miller, do you remember the?
Is it the City Newsletter, probably?
Yes, the City Newsletter, yes. There will be an article with a link, a QR code that people can, can link to fill out, as well as paper copies of this questionnaire for those who, who prefer to not use the technology in that way. The survey will consist of questions about event attendance, event type, pricing, and it will help guide the district in seeking entertainment options for the community. Our plan is to continue this effort and, and provide quality entertainment for the Franklin community in the Saber Center. And we'll use the survey data to, to help guide what events the community is most interested in, whether it be speaker series, music events, theater events, possibly comedians, performance art. Our event offerings will be guided by, by community response. We plan to begin implementing this programming in the next school year. Are there any questions? I know I've covered quite a bit fairly quickly.
You mentioned the, the new systems for ticketing and
Yes.
What about the, the program? I noticed that the program from, had to be QR code on my phone. Is that your, the way you're going?
Uh, that is, and that is what we're That is, and that is what we're leaning towards. The programs have always been a fairly steep expense and we never know how many to produce. If we, if we plan on four shows and we have, you know, 3,200 programs printed, so that we have one for every seat available over those four shows, well, even on Matilda, even with the, with the great attendance, we'd still be throwing out and throwing out 1,000 printed copies. So to, to conserve resources and expense, we decided to go with a virtual program. We have had some response from, from some patrons that, that don't have technology access or were having technical issues that, that we will be printing off a few, a couple hundred actual paper copies for those that, for those that prefer to have the paper copies. So that is, that was something that we, that we experimented with, with Matilda and in the future, we will have some paper copies available.
When I think about my attendance at other venues, usually they're chock full of ads. So really just ads that pay for the?
We didn't, we did sell ads and we had the ads up on the screens in the, in the Saber Center lobby and the ads were included in the, in the virtual copy of, of the program. And one advantage, one thing with the, with the printed copy or the virtual copy of the, of the program is it was full color and families could go home and actually print that PDF out in full color and have a full color program, which normally our programs have a couple of pages of color and the rest is all black and white.
Is it also specific software that handles that or are you just?
That was actually handled by the director, Erica Navin. I'm not sure what program she, she used for that.
Go ahead, Andrew.
I have several questions, but I'll start with, you mentioned that you have students that participate in the tech aspect with you, but that's all in a club manner, right? They're not getting any academic credit for this?
No, there is no academic course for our theater, technical theater programs.
Is that something that, I'm just curious, you would be able to offer? Do you, are you a teacher?
I, I have a teaching license in Iowa. I moved from Iowa to, to accept this position. That's something that I've been looking at getting transferred to Wisconsin.
That would be, because these kids work so hard, it would like, it would be nice to have some sort of structure around their learning because I know you do provide an excellent experience for them, but to have it be recognized in a curricular manner might be nice.
Oh, that would be, that would be fantastic and I would certainly invite, invite that of having, I know the, looking at the Wisconsin structure for theater education, there is specific performance theater and technical theater license, licensure categories and, and I would be seeking the, the technical theater licensure so that, so that we could provide, provide a technical theater course if that's the way curriculum development chooses to go.
If, if we do have more, more events, I suspect that we'll have to do something like that because the kids, there'll, there'll be more, more events to cover, right?
Yes.
I mean, is that the, I mean, you're, you're it, right? You're our paid employee.
Yep, I'm, I'm kind of a one person show here. One thing that, that, and this is something for future conversations, one issue that I, that I started having during Matilda is because we had so much interest in it, I was fielding, fielding a lot of emails, a lot of questions, a lot of phone calls about ticketing and covering the ticket booth while also providing for the needs of the show. It's something I would like to, like to speak in, in a more private setting with, with the district administration about providing an hour, or having an hourly role of ticketed box office events, you know, that being a paid position, supporting, you know, supported by those ticket sales. So, but that's not really for this meeting.
I, I'll just speak to that real quick just because I was a parent volunteer selling tickets. I can tell you, there's definitely a need. It's a very big part of, of what's happening at that time.
Thank you.
A little stressful when people, you got a line of people there, so.
That quest, your answer put me in mind of another question I had, which was sort of as we start shifting towards looking towards community interest programming, which I'm super excited about, I've been hoping for that to start to happen for some time. Is that going to be how we're going to handle that budgetarily? Right, so I imagine that there's sort of one, that, that's, have you thought about, at all about that, Mr. Milzer?
We have had some of that in the past, so there, we do have some experience with it.
Yeah.
I think it, it more depends on what are these extra hours that we need for those kinds of shows? And if they're, if they take more time, they're obviously going to cost more money and we'll just have to make sure that what we're, what we're doing on the revenue side matches with what we're doing on the expense side.
To what extent does the Saber Center have its own budget? Does it?
Yes.
In a separate fund? Is that required by the state or?
Part, part of it is in a separate fund. The things from the outside would be in a community service fund. The things we're doing with students would be in our general fund.
But it's, it would, would outside things be through the rec department fund?
It, it gets dicey there because the, the state says that all of the money that's taken in from the use of buildings and rentals has to go into the general fund. So if that gets bigger, we'd have to make sure that we're matching that up in the correct funds so that we aren't losing money in community service by putting the service out and, and doing very well in our general fund by taking the revenue in. We just have to match that up.
And, and I know as we seek those, those professional performances, we will be mindful of the expense because some of those performances can run tens of thousands of dollars just in booking fees. So we will be very cognizant of what our, what our public interest is, what our capabilities are when, when booking those events.
One last question slash comment. As you're, I, looking towards community programming, I know that the student shows required a lot of volunteers in the box office for an ushers. And I'm just thinking, might there be a role for some sort of a community advisory, sort of friends of the Saber Center group? You're going to need volunteer ushers for things. I wonder, do you want to be making all of these programming decisions all just with yourself or do you want a couple of people to bounce those off? I don't know, it's just something I've often wondered. Might there be a role for a community advisory board, just in terms of programming?
I think in the, in the future, we'll, you know, we'll look at what works best. It was, it was set up originally that it, it wouldn't be just the person who's running the Saber Center doing that. It would be with the administration of the district working on that. Now, over the years, we've had, you know, we, some, we didn't see a pandemic coming, you know, I can, I can admit that. So we've had some down years right at the point when we were going to start bringing in shows. And as we started looking at, well, what shows should we bring in? There are a lot of different kinds and that's where the survey came from. So I think we'll be moving into that and get, trying to give the community the things that they want.
Yeah, all due respect, you guys are experts in education, not necessarily arts programming, so.
I'm just curious, so how open is the calendar for this? I mean, what percent of the dates are available on this new exciting stuff?
Not sure of an exact percentage. Definitely the district and district needs come first, the student needs come first, then community and then outside rentals is how my, how my hierarchy goes for, for booking events. We do have availability in programming. The school really doesn't have many weekend events. All of our music events are, are weeknight performances because they are curricular activities. So we do have a lot of weekends available for, for providing community, community events, community availability.
Like 20 of them?
Ah, I.
Just, you know, we have gold, right?
Twenty, oh my goodness.
I don't know.
It's hard to put, it's hard to put a number to it because I, I need to look at what we have coming up as well. You know, if we're, if we're right in the middle of, of, you know, five music events, I don't want to cause the wear and tear of, you know, taking down the orchestra, the band shells just to put them back up two days later so we can have a rental event. You know, those are, those are the types of things I look at is how much, how much, where are we doing on the facility as well? Is it something that, that causes more, more work and more, more exposure for, for damage to the, to the facility? So it's, it's hard, it's hard to put, yeah. 10, 10 to 12 would be safe, but, but I would, I haven't really put a specific number on how many days are available. We're, we're really looking at probably starting with two to three events throughout the, throughout the year. And then as we get comfortable, more comfortable with that, you know, so that we, so that we limit our exposure.
I know that you have a concert to go back to, but I.
Yes, I do.
Your comment just made me think of something, I was going to piggyback on the student tech crew part of it. The students who are in like this, you know, after school extracurricular kind of thing before we get an actual tech class, would they be able to be like hirable if you were going to do some community events?
Absolutely.
Could they, you know, if the, I don't know, the, the baton twirlers are coming in for a weekend competition, would they be able to be like paid for coming in on the weekend?
Absolutely, that, absolutely, we already have that established with, with our rental events. So if we have like a dance company come in and do a dance recital, our students that participate in that are billed to that, to that rental organization and paid through the district funds and being offset by those, that rental income that goes into the general fund.
And then what you were just saying about, you know, how many people or how many groups that you might have come in and kind of looking at what works and starting small and growing. I would imagine we also have to kind of be aware of what's, what else is being offered in the community. You have?
Yep.
A couple of different communities who also have performing arts centers who are also bringing in groups to those spaces. Do you connect with the directors there?
Absolutely, yep.
And like, like make sure that not everybody's doing the same thing and that type of?
Yes, I do. I've, I've networked with several of the, of the other PAC managers in the area and we have a very good collaborative working relationship. You know, there's, there, there's enough interest to go around and provide everybody. So, you know, that's another, that's another consideration when booking events is that I'm not booking the same weekend that say Oak Creek or South Milwaukee also has a, has programming so that, so that we have a broader audience to draw in.
Excellent. Thank you for the work you're doing.
Thanks, Mr. Stewart.
Thank you. Anybody else, any questions? Thank you, Mr. Stewart, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Health insurance update, Mr. Milzer.
You have a copy of this in board docs, but I'll hand it out because.
Well, thank you.
Hot off the press. We have Mr. Tim Deaton, who's tonight from the Horton Group to talk about our health insurance, which is our self-funded health insurance plan that we set up last year. You have an extra copy, Jim? Laptop died on me.
Oh goodness.
I know. Great first impression, right? Sorry about that.
Thank you.
My wife went to boarding. She's a walkie shop person. You recall last year, we had, we had a lot of discussions about fully insured health insurance, which is where we had been, as well as moving to self-insurance. And we've had really a good experience with it going through it and Mr. Deaton will go over that at this point.
Yes, thank you very much and good evening, everyone. I'm Tim Deaton with the Horton Group. I am the lead consultant for Franklin Schools. And what I'm going to be going through today is a performance evaluation of how we are for the first year through self-funding. We'll look at how that compares to what we budgeted for 2021 and 22 plan year. We'll also look at what we are predicting and budgeting for the upcoming renewals. We will also look at a projection we put together, talk about the success of the new pharmacy program that was put in place. And then lastly, we're going to look at the dental renewal and then also looking at self-funded for the dental and showing some projections and savings and some thoughts around why, why we think that's a good idea or something we should consider as a district. First part I'd like to do is kind of go backwards to what Jim said. You know, last year at this time, we were talking about going self-funded. You were fully insured with United Healthcare. You were in a fixed cost situation. You paid a monthly premium, they paid claims. You then switched to a, a self-funded plan and the, and the reason you switched was control, was, you know, cost savings and it was flexibility. Those are the three reasons. We were with United Healthcare and their Choice Plus Network. The, the decision was to go to, and our recommendation was to go to UMR, a third-party administrator that allowed us to have flexibility in how the plan was, you know, structured. We could put in different components, whereas in a carrier model, they kind of dictate all the rules. So that's where the control comes in. UMR uses Choice Plus Net, Network, so United Healthcare's Network. So that allowed one for the flexibility, but also consistency. So the members didn't have any disruption in their providers. And then, you know, lastly, we were able to put in a couple of programs that helped us save money. One was the stop loss. We were able to look at alternate outside stop loss where we had over 18 markets compete for your business. And secondly, we put in a real progressive pharmacy program that was tailored to your membership. So as we look at fully insured, you know, the insurance company makes all the rules and they're looking at it for 30 million people. In a self-funded environment, we're focused on the members that we're covering. You know, our 400 plus employees and their dependents. Okay, so that's kind of how we, we set the stage last year and how you voted to move forward with the self-funded program. If I go to the next page, you know, we went through an estimated cost of what it would look like. So we did kind of a three-year renewal projection. So last year, you know, we had a, a not to exceed a rate cap of, of, let's call it 9.9. We had the renewal come in at 7.2, but the decision was, you know, if we put a little bit more into the health plan and go self-funded, you know, we're going to have more control and over time, we're going to show about a million dollar savings when you compare that to year over year renewals. Okay? Below is nine months of claims. And I see the word great, a great start. I will temper my, you know, I think it's a good start, it's an awesome start, but we have three months left. So year to date, you know, claims through March, so we still have April, May and June, but we are running at just a little south of 90% loss ratio. And our dollar difference versus budget, we're about 635,000 to the positive. When I talked to Jim, he's like, well, what do you think that looks like at a year end? Once we kind of, the dust settles. You know, what we're showing is just, you know, almost 7.9. So that probably that loss ratio in my estimation is going to go more toward 93, 94, 95. But when we look at what we projected and on top at 8.47 million, we've had some changes in demographics, single family count. So that number right now is probably 8.3 million. But nevertheless, you know, the things that we put in place and, and what I would attribute to the drivers, one would be the high cost claimants. On average, we have eight high cost claimants per year historically. Year to date, we have three with one over the specific stop level, a level of 125,000. The discount through UHC, Choice Plus, at that 55.9% helps, gives us that great discount in the marketplace. And then if you, if you, if you flip to the next page, the progressive new, the, the ability to carve out that, that pharmacy benefit management or the prescription drug program within the plan saved us $768,000. And, and you're like, well, how in the world does that happen? Well, this program takes advantage of manufacturers assistance programs. It takes advantage of coupon programs and we also source prescriptions internationally or through Canada. So year to date and, and how we get this savings number is that we gave Drexel and Aerorax a file of our previous spend with United Healthcare. So they're able to see what the medications would have cost with United Healthcare under the paid plan and then also doing a comparison of just month-to-month claims and what we're seeing. So that has worked very, very well. So those are the, the main drivers, I think, that put us in that position where I think we're, we're, we're ahead and we're in good condition. The next component that we were able to, you know, carve out or have the ability to shop is the stop loss. Like I said, we have 18 markets that we go to. We picked Sun Life last year and we went out to market again this year, which we will do every year. And good news, we had competition. Right, isn't that great? I mean, that's what we want. Alex was here and he talked last year, fully insured, we've got maybe four options. Now we've got 18 insured. Now we've got 18 insurers that are gonna fight for our business. So we used that to our advantage and negotiated, and we got a 7% reduction in stop-loss premium. That, that tells me one thing, is that they see an improvement. They see you as a desirable group. So all going, all going really well. So the renewal projection, again, we're in an immature year, so we have to take into account multiple years. We have to look at claims lag. We have to look at our admin, our stop loss, any other programs that we have in place. But the good news is, when we add that all together, we're projecting a 3% increase. Where I think we projected last year, and again, conservatively, 6.7% for year two. So I would say that's a great first year. I always say great, I'll temper it. It's a, it's a, it's a great start. And we will monitor, and, and we've worked with Jim on a monthly basis, just keeping him up to date. But having that low-high claim activity, which I believe a lot, we're in the pharmacy component. As you know, you see some of those ads on TV. Cosentyx is one. It's for plaque psoriasis. Cindy Lauper, I think, takes that. It's always one that we can relate to. That's $110,000 medication. And either you can get it for free if you meet certain requirements, or you can source it from Canada for half the cost. So just, again, cost, control, flexibility. The reason you went self-funding, and it's all starting to play together.
The medication is strictly on cost, not usage or, you know, using it differently or different, you know, generics. It's strictly on sourcing.
Yeah, and, you know, you're talking about specialty meds. And, you know, there's only 2% of our population that are taking those, but they account for probably 50% of the spend. The rest of the folks are doing their regular generics and brands. And we try to plan design to make sure we're encouraging generics. And we have the ACA, the Affordable Care Act preventative list, where they get the medications for free. So in a self-funded world, you know, we're in year one. But, you know, as you look at year two, and I think we had talked about this in our, in the meeting last year, is what programs can we look going forward and, and look at wellness and just other areas that we can always try to stay in front of it? Because in your world, in a self-funded world, a, a dollar save is truly a dollar saved. You know, the insurance companies, when they do their renewal, you know, they'll put in large claims. They'll give you credit and they add it back in later. And it's just mind-boggling. But you are the insurance company now, up until a point, and then we've got stop loss above that. So I, I would say that, you know, through nine months, this is, you know, everything is working really well.
And I'm looking at this correctly, so medication, $700,000 savings on a base of $972, so that's the-
Yeah. So we saved, we saved over 50%. Well, and just think about it-
Or it's just a fluke or something.
We've done this with several clients, and it's between 40 and 60% savings.
Can I ask a question following up on that? You mentioned that a lot of that savings comes through taking advantage of international markets and coupon programs. And I forget what your first one was. To what extent is that legwork that's having to be taken on by the staff? In other words, are they having to apply for these coupon programs? Are they having to seek a way to get medicines internationally?
No, and, and what was probably happening before was if I went to the pharmacy or if I went, you know, and I, I sourced the, the coupon, it would never hit, we'd still pay that amount. The employee would get the savings, but it wouldn't translate to the district. Having Drexel and Aerorax coordinating that, they work directly with the member on sourcing the medication to make sure that it truly, if it's free, it's free. There's no like, just, you know, we're gonna have you pay less and the district is gonna pay more.
Is there a delay, though, in them getting their medication?
Because right now, right now, specialty pharmacy through United or through any, is, is done by a, a special service.
Is this a mail-order situation?
It's all mail-order for specialty. So it's high-end injectables. It has to be stored at certain temperatures. So you can't go into Walgreens and get some specialty medications. They just can't store it there. So everything is coming via mail anyways. And, you know, I have not seen a delay in people getting their medications. I think we had some situations where people needed to fill it out and they didn't, so we had to remind them. And I think it only happened twice out of the two members and it was just-
So you haven't been hearing a lot of complaints about difficulty getting prescriptions filled? Great.
I expect it's probably easier once you get on it, when you-
Absolutely.
Once I've gotten on mail-order medications, it's certainly easier to get them.
Once it's set up, it, it is really smooth. And I will say that the, the vendors we have in place handhold the members. You know, and, and try to make sure that they, they're not just left to their own devices and, you know, become frustrated. And I think, like I said, we had two instances where they just needed to provide documentation. And we just had to remind them. And, you know, two days later, they had done it and, you know, it was fine.
Is stop-loss insurance strictly a commodity? I mean, is it, we might care who we dealt with before in terms of the insurer because we wanted to keep doctors and whatever, but I assume stop-loss insurance is just-
Stop-loss is a little different, though. You wanna be with the financially strong companies. So of the 18 markets, we only work with A-rated or above companies. So we've got 18. I would say of that, we've got a preferred vendor list that UMR likes, about seven of them. And, you know, we're not gonna, you know, we're gonna look at claims timing, payment, and, you know, longevity. Someone's not just coming in and buying your, your, your business for a year and then, and then gonna jack us up. So I'm very cognizant of having long-term relationships. Like Alex was here, it's, you're gonna, we would like to be with a, a, a stop-loss carrier for one, two, or three, three years. But having that in place or having the ability to shop it keeps them honest. And we put in, you know, a no-new-laser contract with the 50% rate cap, and we have transplant insurance. So we have put in all of the levers that we can do to mitigate risk and protect the district. We talked about risk last year. You know, what's the risk with self, self-funding? Well, if we have a lot of claims that don't exceed that 125, yeah, that's where the aggregate might come into play. That typically happens year one. We're not seeing it here, which is great. I hope it didn't jinx us, but we only have to retire now. We're not, I'm not seeing it here. So I, I think it was the decision that was made. I know it probably was a little bit unknown. But I always tell people, when you're fully insured, you're probably self-funded anyways because if you have a bad year, they're gonna hit you with the renewal. And if you had a good year, they're still gonna hit you with the renewal. We have some recommendations that we put together, and I'm gonna turn it back over to Jim to walk you through that.
Well, as you've heard, things are, things are going well for us. I think from an operations standpoint, it's working well as, as well. So we are moving forward with UMR. We're looking at a 3% rate increase for ourselves to cover our costs for next year. Build a little bit of reserves, but, but not too much, kind of conservative on that. And then I think dental was not something that was on our radar to look at. Definitely, we had a rate guarantee. We were fine. But we talked and we said, no, let's look at that, too, and let's look at it on a self-insured basis. So we did that. They went out and got bids for us, and our, our low bid was from Delta Dental, saving $22,000. And so what we're looking at is we'd like to switch to self-funded dental as well through Delta Dental. They're a, a big provider. Been with them before. They have better customer service than UHC where we are right now. And it would, it would be the same, the same type of plan. But I believe their network is bigger, so I think some of our people could find that their, their dentists are back in the network where maybe they were out when we went to UHC.
I can provide a little more context on that, too, Jim. You know, when we went through it, so if you, we got a flat renewal from UHC. So it was, it was a good renewal. But, you know, when we look at historically, we've switched dental carriers over the last seven years three times. And that is just disruption to the membership because, as Jim said, not everyone, not every network is the same. So then it's, you know, you gotta navigate the change. Our loss ratio over those seven years was 85%, very favorable. The last two years, it's 79. So you pay an administration fee. So just think of Delta as like UMR. And they have their own network. Oh, and by the way, they're great at customer service. And dental is predictable. I mean, of all the school districts, and I would say quite a few self-fund dental, most of the ones, at least all the ones that I work with, work with Delta Dental. And the renewals are very, very predictable and favorable. And you probably will never switch back to being fully insured or you probably won't switch, you know, administrators because they've got 90% of the dentists under a, a, a contract where they can't balance bill members. If anyone knows my dentist, they will balance bill you if the insurance company doesn't pay enough. So again, that member experience. And, you know, it'll, it'll run really smooth. And quite frankly, it'll just be, look at, wow, predictable, predictable. You only have so many teeth and you only have so much annual benefit, to be honest.
Is there an amount, I mean, there's a stop-loss amount, obviously, on, on medical. Is there a stop-loss amount on, on dental?
It's, it's baked into the benefit. So we have an annual limit. And when we switched, Jim had a really good question, is, you know, we're kind of mid-year. So what are we gonna do? We'll, we'll get a, a, a transition report from United Healthcare that shows where people are at in their annual max for the given year. We'll also get a lifetime max report. So if Tim Deaton and his kids had braces, which they both did, they would show that we had payment for them and they've exceeded that. So we're not gonna double dip. I mean, it's not the end of the world if you, if you didn't. But again, I think we wanna be mindful of the, the district's money and, again, put all the protections in place. But like I said, Delta will do a great job. And the savings that they're predicting, and it's very conservative, is, you know, $22,000. Not a lot of money, but I'll tell you what, you know-
It all adds up.
It all adds up.
Right, so I was going to ask the board to vote on the, the change because we're changing carriers on the dental plan. But I didn't notice until late this afternoon that we're not posted for a vote. So what I'd like to do is push the vote to the next meeting on that. However, we do need to get this into the system because we're on an automated system now. And in May, people will be signing up through open enrollment for their benefits. So what I'd like to see is if, are there any objections to moving to Delta Dental? Then at least, if, if you don't have objections to it, I can kind of move forward with the planning and then we can have the vote at the end of the month on changing carriers.
Go for it.
Okay. All right. Okay, thank you. Were there any other questions in general?
So the dental premium goes down?
Right, we'd be paying less for dental.
I mean, employees pay, pay?
No.
Or they don't? Okay.
No, that's entirely savings to the district.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Milzer. Mr. Deaton, appreciate it. School Board Liaison Reports. Any Board Liaison Reports?
I did have the SWSA meeting, and I did share with you the slide deck. So I hope you look at it and find it informative.
Thank you.
Thanks, and we'll talk about it next meeting. We had a CISA 1 meeting last night to finalize the, finalize the pick of the person that is going to be the new executive director. And so I will have an announcement of that at the end of the month when that contract is signed. So that process is over, and now we get to start another one here in our district. Anyone else, Board Liaison, please?
Yeah, so looking at our Franklin Education Foundation, just a couple of updates. We did have our very successful consignment sale a couple of weeks ago now, two weeks ago. I don't have final numbers on it, but I was there. I can tell you it was very busy and very, you know, very well-attended. And I think my favorite part of that actually was at the end, the things that are not sold, the different charity groups that come in and are able to get those donations. And that was, that, you know, just really nice to see that, you know, we're really serving the community as well as our consignors and sellers. Our scholarships are, the deadline for senior scholarships, I should have mentioned this while we had seniors in the room, is this week, Friday. So then we'll be looking at that and awarding our four Education Foundation scholarships. So we, you know, we're working on that. And then just reminding you all to save the date for the golf outing, which is June 17th, Friday, June 17th. I know we have some golfers in the group here, so. There are golfers in the audience. I don't know.
Let's break that down. You never know.
Friday, June 17th in the morning. And then you already mentioned Dr. Miller, the shoe collection. That has been an Education Foundation event, and we are partnering, partnering with the Eco Club. So that May 30, or April 30th, May 1st, there'll be a collection at the high school, so.
You literally just drive up with your shoes and they take them out of your car. It's, get rid of your shoes.
It's athletic shoes?
Any shoes.
Any shoes?
Any shoe and any-
I've donated tap shoes, Linda.
Okay. Time to clean them up. Yeah, any kind of shoe. And it's just, again, it benefits the Eco Club and it's a good thing, so, thanks.
Thank you. We'll move on to school and community engagement reports. I suspect there will be several.
Anybody wanna go first?
Please, Anne.
Okay, so community engagement things that I have participated in. We did the house tour on Saturday. So the, the construction class had their final open house, which I know a number of us were there. I, I just, I still think that's just the coolest program. And I was able to be there for all of its points this year. So from a hole in the ground back in September to the drywall, or pre-drywall studs, you know, in the middle of the year. And then to see the final thing, you know, the house has already sold. I just think it's really great. Yeah, sold for, what did we say?
500,000-ish.
580,000, I think, or something?
It's really nice to talk to the parents, so proud of their kids. And, you know, the kids are really proud of what they've done, and there's something tangible in front of them and-
The kids are super excited about it, like really just truly proud of what they've done. And that's, I mean, that's an experience you don't get in a classroom. Working with all the different vendors and, you know, the tradespeople or whatever else, all those different, we talk about these life experiences and the employer, employee skills you learn, you know, showing up on time and all that kind of stuff. I just think it's a really great, really great program. So that was one thing. Yes, obviously Matilda this weekend. Some of us were there all weekend long. But that was, it was, I mean, I, I'm biased. I had a couple of kids involved in the production. I thought it was an amazing production. But one of my favorite parts of the weekend was actually selling tickets on Friday night and just kind of chatting with people as they came through the line, who are you here to see, you know, tell me. As I was working the two different systems and counting the money, it's a little stressful, making some conversation. And I had a number of people who just were here to see the show. They saw it advertised in the community and they just wanted to come and see the show. And one person, one woman in particular, she said, "I just love that Franklin supports the arts and I wanna come and support the arts." And I was like, okay, do you wanna, you know, let me give you a schedule for all the things that you can come to. But she said, "I just, I'm so glad that this is here in the community, that I can come and have a night out." And it just, it was really, it was really neat. It was just another, another one of those Franklin pride moments, so. And I'll just, I also attended a softball game, kind of softball and lacrosse yesterday were happening at the same time. So I went out yesterday and kind of balanced between the two. It is really cold. I'm kind of glad I don't have any student athletes this half of year. It gets really cold out there.
Spring sports are tricky.
Wow. And they didn't care at all. They just were having a blast. So anyway, it was, you know, just nice to be out and see that, too.
I was at Matilda all weekend.
You were at Matilda all weekend.
Four shows, woo!
I only saw two shows of Matilda, but they were, they were wonderful. The kids had a great time.
And Mr. Stewart did a great job. And the experiences from the community volunteers that allow these kids to engage in all aspects of the production is really pretty cool.
Yeah, I, I mean, all that, I mean, the, all the tech, the performers aside, all the tech stuff, the coordinating of the lights and the sound and microphones being on and off at the right time and spotlights in the right places. I mean, I, I was a tech theater kid. That's really hard stuff to do, so it's really a great experience for them.
I also got to be at the football, football ring ceremony. The one thing that struck me with Coach Johnson when he spoke was-
What's it, Coach Johnson? Brown.
I'm sorry, Coach Brown. I don't know who Coach Johnson is.
There's a lot of coaches.
Guess I made him up. At any rate, Coach Brown, he was, he was saying that he's, he's gotten to speak at several coaching clinics afterwards. And of course, everybody- gotten to speak at several coaching clinics afterwards. And of course, everybody asks him, what is, what's the secret sauce? How do you, how do you get a winning team like this? And, you know, of course, he said, well, the team has to be talented, and, you know, there has to be some luck involved and that sort of thing. But he showed a, he showed a video of the end of the state semifinal game against Appleton North. And when Franklin, after the last play of the game, there was a, there was a kid on Appleton North that was, that was sitting down and with his head down, and two Franklin players, both captains, went over and, and consoled him. And, and he said, you know, that's the secret sauce, the character of these kids. So it was a really nice moment. And, you know, he's, he's a fan, a fabulous coach, so. And the kids are obviously excellent kids.
I also embedded myself in that. I sat in the back, so it was good to see the, you know, hear all the parents talking. And you're right, it's a really great team that they built. And Coach Brown's been around for a long time, and I've seen him, they've all seen him over the years. He's really come a long way in talking about love between the players, which makes it, makes it work.
He really has a heart. And, you know, I, I guess I don't expect that of a football coach, or he was a wrestling coach. And he really has a heart. I really, I've seen him break down, and it just, it's really very impressive.
Yeah. Being on that team and caring about the person next to you, kind of actually puts you, you get that competitive edge.
He cares about his athletes and his students.
You could see that also with the coaches, as they went across the stages, that they all were connected. That's kind of cool to see. I also did go to the play, and I add to your comment of the audience, is that you see not only, you know, community members, and I'm, I just came to watch the show, but also the different generations, you know, grandma comes and, you know, different, it's just the whole community together. It was fun to see that also. We're back from COVID, and we've come together. It was very appreciative to know that we are a different place now, where we were. So...
And I met with Coach Brown, Brown, his name is Brown, yesterday, and toured some of the athletic facilities that we have at our high school. And that was very informative. And have some good pictures on things there that we have. And then Dr. Bear, Beer, and I met with Dr. Miller and Mr. Stumfeld, and Luanne Zelinski to talk about the reunification process that our school is going to practice. Did that this week, too.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Looking for a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.851(c) for presentation of superintendent candidates and interview workshop.
So moved. Second.
All right. We have a roll call, please.
Yes. I vote aye. Mr. Sprague?
Aye.
Mrs. Wickowski?
Aye.
Mr. Alexandrovich?
Aye.
Mrs. Sapursky?
Aye.
Dr. Beer?
Aye.
We are in closed session.
Thank you.
Well, I know that the kitchen's going to be a mess when I get home.
Other than that?
Will there be food?
Where are we here?
School Board Member debriefing.
School Board Member Meeting debriefing. I imagine there's not much debrief to do?
I just, let's have a round of applause for our students.
Yeah. They did a really good job.
They were...
They did a really good job.
I was really, truly impressed.
Future agenda items, you can read them. And obviously, the next meeting will not be, not very heavy, mostly be a reorganization meeting. I doubt that Debbie and I will have as many people here to take pictures with us than there was here last year.
We can stack the crowd.
Well, you got the back, you got the back, and the back truck, yeah.
I know that my kids didn't want to come last time, so.
You're not going to bring them?
Are you kidding me?
I'll bring my kids.
My wife, my wife might come if I asked her to, but I don't think she wants to. All right. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Propose. Meeting is adjourned at 9:18.